Twenty twenty-four, and at this time, I'd ask you to join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, okay. At this time, I'd like to go to having the approval of the agenda.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Agenda is passed. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to scheduled or just scheduled audience, and I think we don't have any, if I'm remembering right. Okay, on to school reports and the fanfare. And the first one we'll have is the Immigration Day Creekside Elementary.
There we go. Thank you for having us here today. At Creekside, we have often prided ourselves in really trying to involve the community and parents in coming to our school and being involved. And this is a unit that third grade, all of our third grade teachers do. And I will tell you, for as long as I've been here, I believe they've done this unit. So it's pretty cool. Today presenting with for us will be Jessica Schoff and Kristy Rath. They're our teachers. And then Nyla Owens and Eva Williams were students that participated in it, and they will also participate, share. So I'll ask them to come on up.
Hi, guys. Jessica Schoff, third grade. Yeah, I student taught, did this presentation when I was here and have kind of taken over. But it is a cross-curricular unit that we do. We do writing journals, or they research their family heritage, and they write a journal as if they're an immigrant coming to America from preferably their home country, takes them through their journey to Ellis Island from whatever country. Reading, we read tons of books, stories, diaries, tales of immigrants and their journeys and their travels, their hardships, and everything like that. And who came to America? And then social studies, we do the why people left their home country to come to America, what their journey was like, and how it was like to get through Ellis Island.
In addition to the cross-curricular aspects of this, it's also a great homeschool connection. To begin the unit, we always send home like a heritage worksheet that they sit with their parents and work through to try to trace their roots back. And it's cool because you, they come back and they talk about, oh, my great-grandma, my great-grandpa, or they've made phone calls to grandparents and learned about their heritage. So it's a great homeschool connection. And in addition to that, we have parent volunteers. So we have eight third-grade classes, and we usually get, oh, we had so many last year, probably five to eight per class. So that's forty to sixty-four parents that come in and they help with all the immigration stations, and they get to work with the kids. And it's just, it's a wonderful day. And we get parent, a lot of parent volunteers. It might be one of our biggest parent volunteer things.
When students go into the medical room, parents check eyes, ears, skin, hair, and nose for any signs of disease. Nurses try to make sure that anyone could be sick didn't enter the United States right away. Students pack their suitcases before their trip to America with only essential items. When they get to Ellis Island, workers in the baggage room check immigrant suitcases to make sure they weren't bringing anything unsafe into the country.
In the information room, we had to fill out an information sheet about ourselves as an immigrant. We had to write about our name, our age, the language we speak, where we are coming from, how we would make a living, and what was our first thought of the Statue of Liberty. In the interview room, we were asked questions about ourselves and our family, what country we were coming from and why, how much money we brought, and how we were going to support ourselves and our family.
Are there any questions for? I don't have any questions, but I have gotten to experience it with my kids, and it is truly one of the most memorable events. You guys do an amazing job, so thank you. Thank you very much. Next is the Spartan Coffee Cart.
Okay, well, while Mr. Geiki hooks everything up, I'll kind of introduce him. So last year, when I started, I had a chance to spend some time in Mr. Geiki's room, getting to know him, his students, and everything that goes on in his classroom is just great stuff. And so we started chatting about some other things that we could do, and we came up with the idea to do a Spartan Coffee Cart. And so I'm not going to spoil what that is yet, but this is something that we've been doing this year, and it has had a lot of great impact on our school and on students. So with no further ado, here they are.
Hi, my name is Chris Geiki. I'm a special education teacher at Spearfish High School. I just want to give a huge thank you to the Spearfish Foundation for Public Education for giving us this grant to allow us to get this coffee shop started. And I'm going to turn it over to Rowan and Molly.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rowan Espinoza, and this is Molly.
I'm Molly Culver.
Okay, let's get things started. Spartan Coffee Cart.
So this is how we got started. We got the grant from the Spearfish Foundation for Public Schools, and this has given us job opportunities. And we bought a fun VPS series, coffee maker, two espresso machines, and three coffee grinders.
Oh, I have number three. Never mind.
So this is our mission. Our mission is we are learning job skills by answering the phone and taking orders from our teachers. We are following instructions on how to make the coffee, and we are delivering coffees to our teachers and working with money and making change.
What we offer, this is our menu that the teachers order from.
You have, you will have menus on the, on your thing you could check out if you want to see all about what we sell.
Seasonal flavors. We offer different seasonal flavors for the fall, winter, and spring seasons. That's it.
So these are our punch cards, as you can see. So we have our prepaid card, which we offer for twenty dollars. At each punch, you get, the last punch, you get a free one. And our punch card, you get up to ten punches, and the last one you get free. How this is going. We love our new coffee shop, and our teachers are ordering from us, and thank you for listening to us. Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I do. How many cups of coffee do you typically do in a day?
Uh, maybe around five or six a day. Any other questions? The floor is open.
What's, what's the most popular coffee that's ordered?
Um, our popular coffee is probably right now, what, apple butter latte.
That sounds great.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Got any samples?
Any samples? We should have brought samples, Chris.
Is it, is it only teachers that can get coffee, or can other people stop by when you're open to get coffee?
Right now, it's just teachers, but maybe in the future, we'll open it up.
Do both of you like to drink coffee?
Yes, and Alicia knows, because I drink coffee every day at her house when we have a holiday.
Rowan, do you like to drink coffee?
Rowan, do you like to drink coffee?
Yes.
Sounds like this was a very good project. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Do we have any conflict?
No conflicts of interest.
There are no conflict of interest waivers. The next item up is number seven, which is the notice. And this notice is beginning for open meeting laws. On December eighteenth at 5:00 PM, a quorum of the school board members will attend the BHSU Listening Tour Reception at the Joy Center. No official school business will be discussed or conducted. And this is something where we have been invited to, the whole board has been invited. Continuing on, we're going to number eight, and that's the informational items from the superintendent update.
Yeah, just a few different things here. I did get a track proposal from Renner Track. Interesting enough, it is, the track is much more expensive than, we're looking at about two point one million for the track. However, the artificial turf is just under four hundred thousand, where monument, or not monument, mammoth was one point three, somewhere in there. So the total cost is, we're looking closer to two point five rather than the three point two, if we were to do the entire package. If you're looking just at a track, certainly Renner Track is much more expensive than Mammoth. Still waiting for, from Fisher Track, I've called them, I've left messages, figured it was the holidays, I don't know what, but they're not returning calls nor emails. So I don't know if they bowed out, but at least they could do is return a call, I would think, or an email. But I'll still continue to try to get in touch with them. I'm not so sure we shouldn't look at a committee to sit down and look at this a little bit further, then make a recommendation to the board. So those that are on, sitting on the facility committee, I know I've been asking a lot of board members lately on different committees, but if it's something that we're looking to possibly do this fall, or this next summer, and maybe we need to put it off till summer of twenty-six anyway. But yeah, proposals are quite high. Next thing, I am on the interview committee for the Chief of Police interviews, starting tomorrow about noon. There's four candidates, and we'll get through all the candidates tomorrow. I'm not sure exactly when they hope to make an announce, make a selection and an announcement, but interviews are tomorrow. PD, active shooter training. They have classroom training on December seventeenth at 4:00 PM. I did get, Nathan asked if he could attend. I did get permission for you to attend if you want to do the classroom training. Then they have the actual active shooter training on December twenty-ninth, when we're not in session, at 1:00 PM. And you don't necessarily have to do the classroom training if you want to do the active shooter training, starts at one, but you have to be there for the safety brief prior to the training.
Do you know what time the safety brief is?
I would just be there by twelve forty-five. To be certain.
And is that at the high school?
Yep, at the high school, yep. Last thing I have here is, we are attending, and when I say we, it's an admin team, and admin and SRO team is attending, I love you guys, training in Rapp City on December eighteenth. It is a training on safety protocols and reunification methods for schools and organizations. So it kind of goes hand in hand with our crisis plan now, but just offers us some different options that we might utilize, especially in the reunification side of things. But, so we'll go and we'll learn more about it. It's free training put on by the South Dakota Safety, School Safety Organization, I guess. Can't think of the actual name right now. And then I've had five people interested in the principal interview.
Oh, crap.
So, okay, if we can whittle that down, Ellen said she'd drop out, Alicia said Ryan served on the high school, so you guys arm wrestle?
I'm good with whatever you just said.
Put our names in a hat.
Okay, we'll flip a coin, we'll let, I'll let you know. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to number nine, the action items, to appoint an Associated School Board of South Dakota Legislative Action Network land member. And Nathan has done it in the past.
So I'm going to ask if we can submit the entire board, every board member's name. If we cannot, we just need to at least name one.
I gather that's what they're looking for, but if not, I mean, it doesn't matter. I think you pick one of us and do it, but I think we all, per their recommendation, Associated School Boards are all land members so that we're all.
Okay, in case we can't do all, if we can just narrow it down to one tonight, and then.
You can throw by anyone. Give Nathan a break.
But if we can submit everybody's name, we will do so.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Eric. Continuing on. Yeah, we may, do we need it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. Okay, so.
Just to clarify, do you need a motion?
Yes.
To nominate all of us?
Nope.
Justin, or I mean Eric. Okay. Move that we appoint Eric, the ASBSD Legislative Action Network Member.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. It has passed. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. And number ten, I'm with it. So for our personnel, we have down there that Dan Olson will be retiring at the end, and I'm, we're going to say thank you very much for all of your years of hard work.
And Dan, just so you know, all the board members have this article.
It was, it was taken two days after I was born.
What's kind of interesting about that article is that my high school classmate was the one that interviewed me and did the article, so.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Actually, Dan, we're all opposing it. Okay, continuing on to number eleven, discussion. And at this time, the first thing is the policy committee's reporting and recommendation for our first reading for the revision to the following policies. So.
So I will go through each one of these and briefly discuss what the changes are. Keep in mind, if they, if they were policies that we did not think needed to be amended, repealed, changed, attitude, or any, anything like that, that is not on this list. Because there was a lot of crossover between the five thousand and six thousand series, so if we did it last year, some of them did need changes or updates. So, first one, school calendar. We changed that because it said to develop the ensuing year's school calendar. We like to do it two years in advance, so we just put on there to develop the school calendar. Will be determined by the Spearfish Board of Education instead of annually. Next one, school dismissal for emergencies or inclement weather. We have crisis management plan that struck out in its district emergency operations plan. Only change there. Sixty-two oh five is the FM in there, and all we did is take the challenge materials form, and we put it right behind the selection of instructional materials, and we put it, form and renumbered it behind the selection of library media. So each form, they're identical, but they just now follow each one of those two policies. Next one, sixty-two fifteen, exceptional children educational plan. That was, that name is a bit outdated. We just relabeled or retitled it to Special Education Services. Sixty-two twenty field trips, that is now in our fifty-one sixty student travel. So this one, looking to repeal, again, sixty-two twenty. Academic testing, that is, we kind of gutted the old one and put in this new one and talked about just academic testing. And so you can see what it all entails there, but again, to assess the strengths and weaknesses of current curriculum and instruction, to evaluate student growth, provide teachers with diagnostic information about student groups, and to serve as a basis for long-term studies of student achievement. Everything that we need, like, need for our data assessment, our data analysis. The next one, sixty-two thirty-five, human growth and development instruction. Again, that was somewhat gutted, still has the same theme, but it was also added in there, the emotional health and social health. Just because you go down to the curriculum review and parental opt-out, we've had parents in the past that have opted their child out of some human growth and development type things, whether it be in the high school with some of Mr. Tyson's curriculum, or whether it be in our elementaries with our kiddos when they're talking about maybe safe touch, things like that, that parents don't feel comfortable with their students hearing the actual anatomy. I think that seems to be a catchword, whereas when they, they want to talk to their kids about that type of stuff. So anyway, this includes not just sexual type things, it's also the emotional and social health. All right, again, same thing as I mentioned before, sixty-two forty is just the form that follows instructional materials or library media. Next one is an AR, and that's sixty-two, it's going to be renumbered to forty-four slash forty-twenty. And all we did is, we had two different policies. We had one on our email, and then we had it on the retention of emails. So we just combined those. It made sense to combine the two. Sixty-two fifty, non-credit courses called continuing units of education. This was implemented back in nineteen eighty-four. I'm not sure what they did back then, but we certainly haven't utilized it since I have been here, where something was offered and it wasn't, credit wasn't awarded in the high school. So we're just looking to repeal this. Sixty-two fifty-five, and the next one, sixty-two fifty-six, kind of go together. Our old policy had a partial definition and how, I guess, the notification process, if you will, for alternative instruction students. And then it also had the placement and credit approval of students not from accredited schools. There was enough information here that we thought we needed to put it in two different policies. So this is all about notification. So it goes through it. It talks about open enrollment, it talks about withdrawal from alternative school, if they are home school to private school, how they come back. It talks about the process. Okay, so that's sixty-two fifty-five. Sixty-two fifty-six, it's not just about high school students, but it's also about elementary, middle school, and how they are placed, other than just a biological age. There might be some type of testing that's required to put them in the proper, at the proper grade level. But then it also does go into the awarding of credits. Sixty-two sixty, district involvement and political activity. This is a bit more descriptive, where the board prohibits these different actions. So when you get a chance, make sure you're looking through that, and you're okay with what it is. But it's essentially, we right now, we have legislative candidates come in and talk into Ganey's or Knight's government classes and things like that. We'll continue to still do that, but to hold particular political meetings in our schools and so on, that prohibits that type of stuff. Next one, sixty-two eighty, is school volunteers. This is a new policy for us, and so it just is more descriptive as to what needs to happen if we have a school volunteer. So there's three really different types of volunteers. There's one that comes on a routine scheduled basis, and if that happens, they need to fill out a volunteer form, and they need to go through the fingerprint background check. If it is somebody that is non-routine, non-scheduled, but comes in, and there's a possibility of not being alone with students and being unsupervised, we need at least an electronic background check. If it is a room parent, they're coming in for a holiday party of some kind, all they got to do is run their ID through the Raptor system, and they don't need any type of application for that.
What's an electronic background? What do you mean by that?
So it's just, it does, it just searches an online database.
Oh, okay.
The other one, the FBI, the fingerprints FBI and DCI, it's much more thorough. Extracurricular philosophy, again, it was kind of gutted and rewritten. I guess the part I liked the most about this is the middle paragraph. While competition winning are natural elements of many extracurricular activities, it is important to maintain a balance between the pursuit of excellence and the promotion of good sportsmanship. The district is committed to fostering a positive and supportive environment where students can learn valuable life skills such as teamwork, perseverance, and respect for others. So it kind of includes a little bit of the old policy, but that is somewhat new in the middle there. Sixty-three fifteen, extracurricular rules and enforcement procedure. You go to the third page, you can, in red, you can see, in addition to the assessment, the student will enroll, show a record of participation, and complete an alcohol-drug diversion program by an approved certified chemical dependency counselor or licensed health professional. We had that under the alcohol and tobacco violation, but we didn't have anything for a SUT-controlled substance or marijuana. So we included, we took what was in the alcohol and tobacco violation, and we included it in the controlled substance or marijuana. Moving on, another one that we kind of gutted and started new with, I thank Mr. Williams and the high school counselors for going through this very thoroughly, but the new graduation requirements. And we have these two separate, there's the diploma requirements on the second page. They were two separate documents before, we included them, they're now combined. But it kind of goes through everything that somebody would need to know if they were looking to graduate from Spearfish. Next one, sixty-six hundred, copyright policy, another one that was fair, gutted fairly well, and replaced with what's in here. A lot of this, what you see in here, is about the fair use policy, at least the second half of it, is about fair use. And it's essentially saying you can take bits and pieces of an article or movie or whatever and use it for instructional purposes, but at the end of the day, you can't just take Frozen and show it for a classroom party unless we have a license. And we have done that in the past. We have done licenses, so they can do various things. And I think Mrs. Bemigus, she helped me out quite a bit on that policy. Class size, sixty-six twenty-five, this is, has been expanded on, has changed a little bit from what the policy committee had recommended. We split out, and made it more like our old policy in the sense of how it was split out. So we had kindergarten was a standalone on the old one, so we have that in there. Primary grades one through three, intermediate four through five, middle school six, eight, and high school nine, twelve. All the numbers are the same from our old policy, with the exception of kindergarten. We used to have no less than nineteen, it is eighteen now. So we could possibly drop one more there. Okay? All right. Building facility use, another one that we spent a lot of time on, a lot of discussion in the admin team. Mr. Wademan went through this quite a bit and found some comparables with other school districts that we could look at. But we have the building and the facility use policy, thirteen ten. You can see that. And then we have the regulations, so thirteen ten AR, the granting approval, cancellations, operational service functions, custodial food service, and then board actions affecting use agreements. What I need you to look for is on page two, the following groups may use school facilities without payment of rental fees. If the district incurs an additional labor costs, these costs will be charged to the group. However, it goes through, school board approves student organizations or clubs, Spearfish nonprofit community organizations, or individuals who sponsor educational events or activities involving Spearfish school-aged students, Spearfish High School alumni reunions, PTAs and booster clubs, the foundation, state or regional professional organizations, and any political subdivision of the state of South Dakota. So I guess I need you guys, between this meeting and next, if you'll take a look at those and see if there's anything in there that needs to be deleted or omitted, or something added as far as no charge for the facility. When it gets down to political subdivisions of the state of South Dakota, BHs would be included in that. Certainly, the city would be included, something like that. Okay? Also, look at the Class A and Class B. Also look at the class A and class B facility rates. And then I guess just let me know if there's anything else on the policy or the AR that you'd like to know more about. And then the very last thing here, FM thirteen-ten or thirteen-ten FM is the lease agreement form.
Are there any questions?
And if, if they weren't being charged, they, would they still just sign the lease agreement form?
Yeah.
And just put zero in there or something?
Right, yep, yep. Something new is also charging, if you'll see, you'll see in here is charging a deposit, a security deposit. We've had some need to do that where damages or additional cleaning needs to take place. So we want to make sure we have a security deposit, but didn't put it overly high, it's only two hundred dollars. But I think that falls in line with what others are doing. So the last thing I would say on this is just if there are anything between now and, any of the policies between now and the next school board meeting, let me know. We can talk on the phone, you can come in, email, whatever it might be, if I need to clarify anything for you. But all of these, again, with the exception of the class size, was approved as written from the policy committee.
And I would like to say thank you to the policy committee. Done a lot of good work. And thank you too, to Mr. Easton. Okay, moving on to B, the governor's budget address.
Well, if you had the opportunity to listen to the governor, the revenue forecast isn't all that great. There's, it's not coming in as the way they predicted in this current budget year, so next fiscal year is looking kind of bleak. So for public school funding, she, she recommended a one point two-five percent increase. So it's roughly eleven to twelve million dollars increase in funding for public schools. But part of that, she recommended four million dollars out of the unclaimed property fund. Four million dollars to fund ESA, so education savings accounts, most commonly known as vouchers. And so we knew it was coming in some form, if it wasn't going to be from the governor, it was going to be from some legislators. And we're still likely going to see some voucher bills from legislators. What the governor has done though, she is, this will not be in the form of a bill, it will be in the Department of Education's, it'll be a budget line for them. So they will oversee it, they will get the funding, they will distribute it. So they will send out the, or collect applications and they will determine it's a, on a need basis. So, yeah, they will, they will process all of that and they will be sending out the funding to parents. I sent this form here, the educational savings account, kind of talked a little bit about what it was about. But interestingly enough, it says it's, again, it could be used for students that are going to private schools to help pay for their tuition. What's interesting here is if you look at, say, Sioux Falls Christian, their high school tuition is ten thousand dollars. And so three thousand dollars to pay for that, these families that are going to qualify for this, they can't afford the other seven thousand to send their child to, to private school. So being on a needs basis is interesting. But again, the use of funds, they can purchase curriculum or classroom equipment. So, not so sure about, sure about that. The other part of her address that I guess I will point out is not necessarily about what she said, but what she didn't say. So she has a slide that again wasn't, she didn't speak to, but it's in or on the website for the governor's address. And it was budget reductions. So again, interesting enough, the TANF, the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, again, she's cutting that by five million dollars. But she's going to turn around and give money back to needy families to either home school or go to private school. It just, to me, that doesn't make sense. Anyway, South Dakota Public Broadcasting Funding Adjustment of three point six million, so a reduction funding there. Border Regions, a reduction of two million. Graduate Medical Education by one point seven. Dual Credit, and we have to learn a little, a few more details on this, but Dual Credit, this is a fifty-fifty adjustment of one point one million. Subsidized, subsidized assisted living, one point one million. State Library, just a little over a million, and it kind of goes on there. Again, the ones that we're most concerned with, because we've already heard from these entities. So like South Dakota Public Broadcast, and we've heard without this funding, they probably won't be able to do our state tournaments. So they won't be able to broadcast them, concern there. Now again, are they saying this in order to get the educational group behind them, the Activities Association behind trying to get this refunded or not being cut? The other one I'm concerned about is the State Library there. We've heard from the State Library that if that is cut, the online book database that is being supplied to public schools for students to go on to find different books and so on, will not be available. Again, I don't know if it's a tactic to get the state, to get us to get on board with the State Library to fight this budget cut, I'm not sure. But that's part of the talk right now is those reductions. The other thing that you have in front of you, or at least was sent to you and it's a part of the agenda, is a resolution to oppose the educational savings accounts in South Dakota. I'd like to go through each whereas a little bit. And then after I'm done with this, then just open it up for discussion. So the first whereas, South Dakota Public Schools are a cornerstone of the state and the pride of their communities. Welcoming all children, educating and feeding them, connecting them with friends and mentors and helping shape their future while preparing them to be the next generation of our state's workforce. Whereas a proposed educational savings accounts for the twenty-twenty-five legislative, legislative session is simply a different title for a school voucher program. Whereas while the proposed educational savings accounts, ESAs, are being marketed as offering school choice. This claim is misleading as South Dakota has a longstanding tradition of school choice. Offering families a variety of educational options for decades, including open enrollment, private schools and homeschooling. We have had home school and private schools for years and years and years. As of nineteen ninety-seven, we have had open enrollment. So that is school choice, nothing is changing with school choice. It is the, the now paying somebody to keep their child at home or send them to private school. Whereas numerous studies have consistently demonstrated that school voucher programs fail to improve student academic performance and offer, often exacerbate educational inequities. What a lot, what a lot of the studies are showing is that those states that do require private school students or home school students to take an assessment, South Dakota does not. It has shown that they're not doing any better, in fact, they're doing worse than their public school counterparts. The other part of that is the students that go to home school, they come back and we're, and they're finding that the students that come back to public school are behind their public school peers. And again, this is as a whole, I'm sure there's some families that are doing a wonderful job and it's not the case, but this is as a whole.
How, how widespread is that study that shows that they're either behind public, their public school counterparts? Is that, is that a robust study across a large group of students or is that narrowly focused?
I don't think it's narrowly focused on one particular state. It's the gentleman that, Callen, that did that, I think that is the states that, when he was doing the study, the number of states that offered that.
And Nathan, as a teacher, I saw it.
But I, I can send out the, the white page, if you will, that gives the information and you can look for the.
Yeah, I don't remember, I watched, I watched his presentation, I don't remember if that was provided in there, so I'd love to see that.
It was sent out afterwards, so I can send that to you, yep. Whereas the proposed program will be implemented by using millions in, in public taxpayer dollars to fund non-public schools that may pick and choose who they admit. While also charging tuition and raising millions of dollars in scholarship funds or to fund home school programs with no transparency or accountability measures to prove success. Similar to those required in public schools. Again, we have state assessments where students are required to take them, the assessments, and we report out what those results are. There is absolutely no assessments or required accountability for home school or private school students. Now there are thirty-five private schools in South Dakota that are state accredited and take the assessments. You'd be hard pressed to find their results on their website. You may find their ACT scores, which again, is a student population that wants to take the ACT and finds value in it. And so the scores are pretty good, ours are pretty darn good as well. So, anyway. Whereas the state budget, which provides a funding increase for public education faces constraints due to stagnant rev, stagnant revenue collection. And as a result, the proposed increase in state aid for public schools is less than the level of inflation. Again, we're looking at one point two-five, I believe inflation is just a little over two and a half to three. Whereas the lower unexpected revenue, nope, I just did that one. Whereas the school voucher program will not stop at the initial amount. As the intent, as the intention to grow school voucher funding has already been stated even before it has been adopted. Again, the governor says that she expects this program to grow year after year after year. Whereas the school voucher programs planned inevitable growth will be damaged to the future of our public school system, students and communities. And then whereas we as a school board members call for legislators to oppose the proposed school voucher program because of the foreseeable detrimental impact it will have on South Dakota public school system at the expense of our students. So the governor has said that this will not impact funding for public schools, it's not coming out of the pot. Well, when the state only has a certain amount of revenue, it's got to come out of somebody's pot. So whether it's out of public podcasting, whether it's out of TANF, whether it's whatever. Also keep in mind that there's already five million in tax insurance credits that insurance companies can take that tax credit and write a scholar, or do a scholarship for a student to attend a private school. So there's nine million dollars out of the state budget that could be utilized for something else. I don't know, it's, if you look at other states, you look at Arizona, that, what they say, it went up by, it ballooned over what they thought the cost by over fourteen-hundred percent. It's up into like three hundred and twenty-three million, I think it is. So I mean, the expenses ballooned, and this with no end in sight, who knows how far it will go.
Has there been any conversation between superintendents and legislators to try to figure out what their version of a bill will look like to try to find some common ground and?
Not necessarily, we're all talking to our legislators, one, you know, in each of the legislative districts.
Sure.
I'm meeting with mine on December sixteen. Yeah, December sixteenth.
So outside of signing a letter, and the letter goes into great detail obviously about all the negative aspects of the voucher program. I mean, say this goes through in some, some version. I mean, have you started to formulate an idea or a plan on why? Because the, the whole point of this usually is about competition makes us better. So have you started to think about what you might say to people and why we should be a school of choice?
Well, I would say I don't mind competition as long as we're all on the same playing field. Untie my hands, if it's a popularity contest, untie my hands. Let's do away with standards, let's do away with assessments, let's make sure teachers aren't, don't have to be, don't have to be certified. I mean, we have a lot of hoops that we have to jump through and it's not always so popular with these folks back here. If it is really about a popularity contest, untie my hands and we'll, we'll make it about a popularity contest.
That could be part of this, is educating people the differences. But I mean, I think we should formulate a plan on why we would be a school of choice, why we would be as good or better, you know, than, than a private school, for example. What, what can we do that they can't do? So I, I think it would make sense for us to, to have some of those ideas and start formulating. And even if this doesn't go through, there's obviously a population out there that feels that public schools aren't the answer. And how can we educate and show them that they, they are the answer?
Well, it's going to be, I, I should say it's not going to be, should say it's going to be hard to, to formulate that. Again, the reason why they go to home school or to a private school is they have probably lower class sizes. They have the ability to weave religion, Christianity into whatever they're doing. Some, there are some schools that are not based on, you know, it's not a Christian belief or a religious base, but there's, there's something that's appealing that allows them to go there. Smaller class, I mean, yeah, there's just, there's some things like that, that's hard, just hard to compete with.
But I, I would think that we could come up with some things that, that we do well. That we need to point out, that we might, we might know this, but does everyone know it?
Sure. So I mean. We need, no doubt, we need to tell the story.
If we just send a letter and that's all we do, that's not good enough. So I'm just, I think you need to have some type of idea on how we educate the masses about the differences. People are going to make their choice.
Sure.
But if you don't give them any information, their choice might not be an educational choice, it might not have been based on facts or substance. So let's, let's provide some facts and substance.
And how, how would, how do you, I mean?
Well, could, could, I bet, I bet a principal could come up with five reasons why they think their building is a great building, they've got great things going on there.
Only five?
Well, I didn't ask that, but. Well, obviously we're going to find things in there, but I mean, are the things that they find, can they be duplicated? That's what I'm trying to figure out, are there differences between, can they be duplicated there as here? I'm not saying we can't do it, we got awesome schools, and we got great staff, great, great teachers, I mean, we, we can come up with them. I'm just trying to think of things that are the differences between a private home school and, and our schools.
There's a great seventeen million dollar example sitting outside the, the high school right now. There's, there's no way even a home school or a, a private school consortium could come up with a facility like that and the programming that we have there.
Are we referring to like specifically Spearfish School District or Public Education School?
I'd just keep the Spearfish, because not all public schools are equal, sorry, they're not, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I think that's a great, I, for me, so a couple of things. One, if, if no, if this isn't passed and legislators get something passed, is that coming more directly from our funding that they're proposing? Or do we know where that they're getting the voucher?
Yeah, I haven't seen the bills that, you know, that they're going to probably propose. If you were looking at past ones, I think Representative Odenbach was for thirty-five hundred and it was to go for, towards tuition. To a private accredited school. That's passed, I don't know if it's changed or, you know, how much it's changed, what other bills might be coming forward.
And does that come, would that directly impact our school district? Or is it coming from the, a big pot in the state?
Again, the pot's only so big. If you take it from somewhere, it's not going in another place, yep.
I think that the larger overarching question for me in all of this is the, those that are proponents of ESAs and vouchers are using the district report cards. And the proficiency percentages to fuel the fire that they're trying to light under this. What, and I know we spoke ad nauseam on this, what metrics do we have to show that those numbers aren't accurate and they're not an accurate representation of our students in this district? How, how can we parse that out? My, I spoke with my cousin a lot over Thanksgiving Eve, actually I used to have Brady's job before Brady was here and he's in Watertown now. And I asked him, I said, that's not accurate. And he said, he could speak to his district that graduation rates are high because teachers want to graduate kids. And they may grade on a curve or change something, so the, the graduation rate might not be as drastically different if they were held to the same as state standards are. So I'm, I'm lost in the middle of, because it doesn't seem reasonable to me that we only have forty-eight percent of students that are proficient in math. That's not, that's not conceivable to me, that that number would be that small. So how do we, how do we harness that and figure out where the facts are so we can even have a conversation around something like this?
Yeah, and I would have to rely on the principals and their actual buildings and, and stuff. But I mean, that is, yeah, by and large, more than fifty percent of our kids are proficient in math and ELAs a little bit higher. And I'm not going to make excuses for them, I mean, it's something that we got to get better at. But I think a lot of it is not so much of our, on our teaching and learning, it's more on test preparation. So it's more on getting students, expose them to the interim assessments that are, the state assessments. Get them accustomed to the types of questions that are on there and get in front of them. I think there's some other things that we're doing, like in high school with our math, we're, we're changing our scope and sequence a little bit on our high school math. Uh, we're, we're changing our scope and sequence a little bit on our high school math programs. There's just some small things that we can tweak to, to automatically make things a little bit better.
We test all students to correct.
Correct.
We, yeah. Some special needs.
But I mean, to Nathan's point, and you're right, we did bring this up at the last meeting, but, uh, I mean, that, that is used against public schools. And a chart and a graph or just numbers without context is very, it, it can be dangerous. Because you read it one way, someone else reads it another way. So you need to provide some context to it.
Well, it's interesting, the very proponents of E S As who are utilizing our scores against us absolutely want no accountability whatsoever. So if somebody, a homeschool advocate or an E S A advocate says, we need this, okay? Then provide some accountability. Mandated state assessment.
That's how we should maybe look at approaching. My, so I graduated through homeschooling and I loved it. It was an amazing thing. It was great. My concern is how we just recently, there's laws that have changed, that there's, there is no accountability at all. And I know that there's a lot of kids that have been, maybe shouldn't have graduated too. I mean, so I think how can we, if there's account, if there's more accountability, maybe that's the approach to looking at, encouraging, if this does somehow go through, can we encourage, okay, then you need to be held accountable to the same. Um, there has to be some accountability because right now there's none at all. And that's scary to me. It's very scary. But I do also like to rhyme your approach with like, we can, we have some great qualities. How can we share that and how can we show it? Again, I thought, I mean, I, I think having that homeschooling background and yet knowing how valuable our public schools are, what my kids have learned here with these principles, with our edu, it is phenomenal. And how can we show that too? Is that something that's important? We're very blessed.
I think we need to look at the growth that will happen with it, with how much taxes are going to be happening. From, uh, if we look at the other states that have already done this and we can see that they, theirs have grown. I can't understand how they won't tax us higher and higher and higher. And I don't think people really want it to be higher and higher and higher. So I think that is something that needs to be out there too.
So it should have started, I don't think there's any administrator in here myself that is against school choice. There's, all of us agree that parents should have the right to choose whether it's homeschool, private school, or public school. That parents should have that choice. It's about funding, uh, that other, uh, the other entity, if you will, or the other entities. The other thing I would say, and again, this is what, you know, where I hesitate a little bit to some degree. Nathan, when you mentioned the C T Center, homeschool and private school kids, they have access to that.
Yep.
So it's not just a public school, and as well they should, because those tax, those tax dollars are going to it. Our activities, they should have access to their tax dollars are going to it. I, I just think that any public tax dollars need to be going to public schools. That's, I guess, my feeling. Uh, as far as the, um, unclaimed property, uh, money or fund that's, you know, how many, how many bridges across South Dakota they talked about need to be replaced in the millions of dollars? I mean, it could go to that. I mean, there are so many different things that it could go towards.
Although eventually that account runs dry when you start making large expenditures like that out of it. And then something gets shifted and eventually there's a bill that's passed that says it's a division of property taxes and then it does start to reduce funding for public education.
Yep.
No, I, I would say I agree with everything that's been said, but I think, and, and along the same lines, we can, we can sign and agree to a resolution all day, but if we don't proactively show why, why we believe in that, why we sign it, why we, you know, pass the resolution, we're not doing ourselves any favors. So we have to be, we have to continue to, to be in front of legislators, continue to, to be the voice for it, and stand by it. We can't just stop, you know, after we.
I agree. That's, yeah, this is.
And show our work and show why, um, because just signing it, um, doesn't do much if we aren't going to go out and show and, and put ourselves on display, um, and prove our point as to why we believe the way we believe.
It's just, it's just really frustrating to me that, uh, there are private schools that have on their website that they will not accept students of special needs. They will not take, uh, students of poor academic, uh, performance or behavior issues. And they're going to get public funding when they can discriminate against those populations of students. That just, that really frustrates me.
Is that, is, is there even, is there laws that would play against that?
Well, they're.
Or is it, I guess it's just more, it's your funding.
It's a private, well, it's, it's the parents that are accepting the money, not the schools. The parents are taking the money and, you know, they'll.
Do with it whatever they want.
They can do what, what, what they wish. The other thing is that, and we call it a group of no school students per se, but we have a number of students that go to homeschool because they're being held accountable in public schools, whether it be for truancy, for grades, for behavior, or whatever. And at some point, parents think, you know, it's just as easy to homeschool them and then I don't get the phone calls or the emails or the certified letters or whatever. And so there's a certain contingency of students that are just what we term as no school. And again, now they're going to have, or their parents will have an opportunity to collect on this, uh, based on their needs. That's frustrating as well. Again, I didn't, I wasn't looking for the resolution for tonight. I just wanted to put it in front of you, uh, have a discussion, have a discussion about it and then be able to think about it and possibly have on the January board meeting agenda. Question?
Any other questions?
We will work on, uh, putting a list of things together of, uh, things that I guess that we have that, uh, I guess public or homeschool does, do not have. And we'll, we'll have that, uh, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, they, yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I guess we can go, continue on. And our next one is number twelve, the minutes. Consider the regular meeting minutes of November eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The minutes have passed. Moving on to number thirteen, the financial reports and bills.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The financial reports and bills have been approved at this time. We're at adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.